CTE. So at this point, I will turn it over to the school board and let them talk to us.
Okay. I'd like to say thank you, gentlemen, for meeting with us. I think we have laid out a plan, and I will let Dr. Hornet speak more to this, of what programs we have in place and what programs we can add if we were to obtain more space. And so with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hornet.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Gentlemen, thank you again. I echo Ms. Page and appreciate your time. Over the past few months here during my transition, it's become pretty clear that one unifying rallying cry among constituents is the desire to enhance CTE programming, to equip our students with real-world skills and have real-life opportunities and experiential exercises to enhance instruction and have them prepared for the job force and the job market. Certainly, some of that comes into play with respect to improving our teacher retention and education, enhancing what we can do as far as bringing on staff. There is also a considerable portion that relies on space. One of the key factors to consider with respect to CTE and the instructional programming is that many of the programs that we would like to bring forth require a lot more space than a traditional classroom. Many of them actually require that you have an instructional space separate from the lab space. And so that's where you're getting into in this document, Renee. If you please feel free to chime in. But we provided this information for you on page eight, which is some of the school space requirements that Virginia has based on size. And you can see where they started to be upward of 2,000, 2,600, 2,800 square feet for the lab space. In the letter that we sent to you last week, we articulated one very poignant story about an excellent teacher and a program that we had at the high school. And unfortunately, we ended up losing that program because the instructor went to a different division where he would have a true, actual classroom space rather than working outside. And he was responsible for 40 students during the course of COVID, being able to pass and acquire a nationally certified credential for the workplace. And so after much deliberation and discussion among the divisional level cabinet, as well as meetings collectively and individually with school board members, we are here to respectfully ask you to consider the purchase of the property, the lot property nearest to the high school. It is, being in that area, it is a very, very good location for the high school. When you look at other locations that would be outside of the scope, you begin to increase costs, in particular administrative costs, supervision costs to oversee an area that's off-site, additional food services, transportation, et cetera. Having a site that is closer to the high school would enable us to reduce those types of overhead costs. One cafeteria, one set of administrators. We wouldn't have to worry about trying to work the schedules out and students missing time. If it was in another location, we would have to look at having teachers and bringing them on to teach core classes potentially at another off-site location. And so after much consideration and deliberation, we feel strongly that this would be an excellent move for the school division, and that's what brings us here today. And so myself, any of the folks behind you are here, school board, to answer any questions and happy to engage in this discussion. But again, we just thank you for this opportunity to sit down with you and present this information. Thank you.
Given your current square footage of the high school, how much space are you designating now to CTE?
Do you have an idea, Renee, as far as the actual square footage for it?
I don't have actual square footage.
I mean, percentage.
Well, we have the house that used to be the school board office. That's our JRTC curve, so that house that you see on there. So that is all CTE. We have an ag building, which is all CTE, which houses three different teachers, well, two and a half, which is in two departments. So you have the Hornets Center for Innovation down in the basement area that has five classrooms and a lab space. We have upstairs, we have our business department has three classrooms, as well as our family consumer sciences has a classroom, and our nursing has a classroom space, and then two small rooms that are using for their lab spaces.
We have cosmetology.
And then cosmetology is an art building.
To the extent you've looked at that property, to what extent can it meet your needs in its current configuration?
With respect to space, there are spaces that we have looked at and we have deemed would be potentially usable. The hog parlor, the house on the property itself could potentially be used as well as some of the larger spaces in the storefront. The cautionary tale is they are not up to code as far as education-wise. I think we're going to have issues with respect to ADA accessibility. I think there's issues with the fire suppression system, and so it doesn't exist. And so if you were going to look and probably change uses from what's probably currently commercial or some type of mixed use to an educational use, that is where additional monies would be required for us to actually place programs in the existing structure as we speak now. But I would see those as fairly considerable issues in order for us to overcome to actually make the current space usable. It's big enough, and there would be things that we would really like to get used out of. I just don't know how well that translates as far as meeting code and new requirements.
What you're saying is you could not move any of your students in there for any of the labs or any of the other CTE programs as it's currently configured?
I do not.
What did the building official represent?
What I just reported to you, that, and Mr. Barry, you can catch up too, because I know that you walk with him as well, that the transition from a mixed-use facility to an educational facility poses some significant challenges as far as ADA accessibility. The fire retardant systems, sprinkler systems. I think they're concerned as far as.
Building code in regards to asbestos.
Asbestos, there you go.
Possibilities. Just the structure itself as far as some of the things that are fine with it being zoned as it is now in use, when you start using it for educational, all of that changes.
Have you got any cost estimates at all? What it would take to.
I do not, sir, no.
So we're looking at the price of procurement plus considerable renovation or replacement?
Are you considering renovation or replacement?
I really think that would depend on probably how good the roof and some of the parts of the existing, the outside structure would be. I could potentially see where, if you would do work gutting the inside, that the physical space itself could still be adequate to house. Because it's not a square footage issue. When we walked through and looked at the plans, we liked the amount of space that was in there. So that could be a potential look, yes, sir.
Over the last 10 years, we've had, I say "we," I'm talking about supervisors paid for some of it, some of the students that paid. But we've looked at many facilities around here back as far as 12 years ago. And they always came up with the same, the architects always came up with the same thing. It'll cost you as much to upgrade this building to school as it will tear it down, start over. So be honest, I think that's probably what we want. If I have to be honest with you, I think that's what is going to happen with this property. The reason, well, you know, we've been told it's coming on the market, or is on the market. It's just the location, it's ideal. I mean, personally, I would like to just, if money wasn't an issue, I would just like to have it all. But for me, you need to get the property, even if it takes us another five or 10 years before we do something. We've got to get this property. It's in the right place. It has potentials for other things also. I mean, you could expand a fieldhouse. You can do all kinds of things with that property.
Yes, my question is, you're looking for additional space for CTE. Is there any other needs for additional space when you both of your high schools decide to have CTE?
Yes.
So it's just not CTE?
Well, we have five, 10-grade buildings right outside the high school right now.
So you really need to look at the total picture, not just part of it?
So if we pull those CTE classes that are in the high school right now, if we pulled those out, would alleviate a lot of space in the high school for students?
That was the reason for my original question. How much percentage of square footage is being designated CTE now? And how much would that allow for other things if we were able to take that out of the equation? Let's start over.
I'm going to estimate concernably. We could probably have, we could probably chunk that up into probably 10 additional classrooms, what's inside the building, not counting the outbuildings.
Or we could get rid of the learning cottages.
Okay, so reading page eight. I didn't go through and add. Sort of midpoint, you're talking about 40,000 square feet. Is that what you're looking at?
Obviously, that would be a great estimate.
Well, page eight is actually telling you what the Virginia school requirements are.
Right, not that we necessarily have everything.
Right. Though page nine would be our need. So if you looked at agriculture education, we would be looking at three classrooms plus the lab space. What you see on page eight, that's telling you how large the lab space is.
I need to multiply the thing on page eight by the numbers on page nine.
Correct. And then the classroom space that you see on page nine, the average recommendation from this Virginia school space requirements group for a classroom space is 700 square feet. So wherever you see classroom, that would be 700.
Question, in terms of the main building, has anybody done an assessment of the number of square feet or the percentage, whatever, that building that is usable in its current form? Not talking about issues like fire suppression, but just the way it's laid out. The last time I looked, I think the number is like 16,000 square feet is what's recorded in terms of when the county assesses it. But out of that 16,000, there's a fairly substantial fraction that is included in things like porches and overhangs and those kinds of things, which aren't classrooms or labs or anything else. And so I'm just wondering if anybody had looked at what that would net down to in terms of usable space? Because it seems to me that that's, you know, even if you take some generously, a quarter off the 16,000, you're down to 12,000 feet. That allows you to do a handful of these, but nothing approaching your list on page nine. So there just seems to be a significant mismatch. Doesn't mean it isn't workable in some way, but as a starting point, that mismatch is something that seems to be a deep issue.
Does anybody remember what the square footage on Culpeper Tech Center is?
It would be.
I think.
I'd like to price.
Yeah.
Maybe 20,000, I don't know.
Because unless I think additions change, we're looking at a minimum of 60,000 square feet, what you have here.
That's the mismatch I was.
Well, I don't, not every single one of these programs. These are things that we would like to bring forward. We're not going to be able to.
Well, okay. And that comes to my next question. If you get a property, how many square feet do you need to begin with? And then you're talking about adding how many more square feet to get there? One of the biggest reasons I ask is it's been probably four, five years ago that we actually met the Blue Bell Building. And at that point, 6,000 square feet is what we're talking about. And then it doubled to 12,000.
If I may, if you add the numbers just for lab space alone, you're 31,600 square feet, and then addition to 700.
I'm sorry, how much do you say?
31,600.
Right, okay.
Yes.
That's minimum.
That's just lab space, that's no class.
Right, that's the minimum, right. I went midline and came up to 40,000, so. I guess the point is, it sounds like, back to Jim's point, that, you know, we almost have to look at this as two separate actions. The acquisition of, I'll say, dirt, just to be clear. And then what is the second question? It doesn't sound like a three-part. Well, yeah. It sounds like dirt, an initial building, and then additional space. Is that? If the additional, if the existing building is even in play? Well, I'm saying build a new, if we took dirt and a new building for today's needs, then we would have to then, at a future dollar amount, put extra in to meet tomorrow's needs. Am I following it properly, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Renee, what do you have to add?
We initially met with the Blue Bell building, but it was my understanding that what I was tasked with was we would be able to give you 10,000 square feet. What could you use that 10,000 square feet for?
So that's where that first initial request came from, if I were limited to the 10,000 square feet, which was basically to move our existing programs out of the high school into that space with the addition of hopefully down the road, an automotive program.
Our original discussions were 6,000 with an addition of 6,000.
Okay, I thought it was 10,000. Six to 10,000 and an additional. So then, I think when we met again, I was asked like, what is it that if you had a CTE space that would encompass all your needs? And that's what this is about now. So the first thing that we talked about was, given this amount of space, what would you use? But this is what a CTE program, a comprehensive CTE program would be if we could stand the way we would like at our high school, including things like building trades and culinary arts, which have been something that I've heard from many of the economic workforce meetings and things like that, that people would like to see us bring back those types of programs. And the Blue Bell building got scrapped, and I think it was decided to be used for fiber link storage because it was a huge asbestos issue there.
Well, it was a huge issue, period. Just lots of.
Lots of issues. It's okay as a warehouse, but nothing else.
But I guess.
That's when we stepped back from trying to maybe obtain a portion of that building, was when it came into play, when it contained to remove all of that to be able to house students in there. It's when we stepped back from that.
I know Germana offers a lot of this, and she do a lot of work with Germana back and forth. Say you build in trades. Do we need? Would you have, that's the next question. Would you have teachers, instructors for each of the building trades? Would they be offered at the same time or at separate times? I'm just trying to get a grasp on that because Germana has labs, portable labs for each of the building trades. Are we looking at running all the building trades simultaneously?
Most building trades programs that are comprehensive do have the different parts, especially the, of course, the carpentry, construction piece, the electricity, the plumbing, and heating. Those are the big ones. The masonry maybe not.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, so you would be running, something electrical, HVAC, and framing, all at the same time? I'm just trying to figure out the number of students in this comprehensive program. How many do you need per class? And then how many classes are you going to fill?
So many of these classes are capped by the state. Many of them are capped at 20. The vast majority of these are going to be capped at 20. And so if they're offered at the same time, it will depend on the number of teachers. You will have a teacher who is certified in that area, and he or she would have a schedule based on that. And then we would fill the schedule with, we would want to max it at 20 for every single section the teacher teaches.
Okay. I'm trying to get an idea of, so you're talking 80 students. Would that be the cap for those four programs? Or would that be 80 students per block during the day?
It would be per block. Each block can only have 20 students in it for these. So each teacher would teach three blocks a day, plus have one planning period. That's the way it's set up now. So, but a building trades teacher can, depending on their certifications, it all depends on what they're, with CTE programs, they have certifications. And if they're certified to do electrical and plumbing and HVAC, then they can teach both those classes. So one person could teach multiple sections. So it could possibly be that one teacher is able to teach, you know, more than one area. But that would be 20 cap each block in that lab space. You can't go across.
To what extent, if you looked or communicated with other people you could partner with to provide any of the resources in terms of either classrooms or labs or equipment? Have you been able to do anything with other groups, whether they're instruction groups, colleges, or even with regard to some of, maybe some of the businesses? Is there any way, have you looked at any of that?
Yeah, you want to talk about the Germana toward now?
Currently, right now, we are partnering with Germana and utilizing the Culpeper Center for our automotive program. But Germana uses that automotive program in the evenings. So, and of course, Culpeper schools use it during the day. So in the evenings, our students, during the week, our students have the classes on campus at Orange County High School virtually. And then one day a week, they go for their lab, and they go from 4:00 till 10:00 at night, do the toe up and use that lab space. So that's one example of a partnership that we have. We did try with our cosmetology program when it was first, when we were first trying to start that program to partner with a business and have our students go to the business and use that as the lab space. And it was not successful for a variety of reasons. And so that's when we then put it up for TI building. We mid-year moved the students there so the program could continue. We do try to partner with other divisions as well. Like currently, we have Madison County students coming to our cosmetology program. We've opened up three slots for them to come and bring students to our program. So we do, you know, try to. And with that, our hope is that when they have something that we don't have, maybe they would let our students come there as well.
And I'm not trying to be negative here. I'm just trying to get a handle on all of this. And that was one of my concerns, is you're opening up for other schools to come in. So is it feasible that we're going to have 120 students in the trades program to fill that space, to pay, make it worthwhile to have those instructors? And tied in with that, the total square footage of Culpeper Tech Center is 50,000 square feet. That includes their massive hallway, whatever you want to call it. I'm just trying to wrap my head around. Quite honestly, I'm floored by the amount of space. Just trying to process that.
Well, I think primarily, and I understand where you're coming from, Jim, I think primarily, this meeting was called to discuss this one piece of property, which very frankly is, I think, unfortunate. It's not really a good idea to have a public discussion about a piece of property and talk about buying it. It's not the way it's really been done. And I'm a little uncomfortable because I have to make comments about someone's private property, but that's where we are. This piece of property is not, I understand where Jim's coming from. It would be nice to add it to the high school property, but only at a price that is reasonable. And if we're going to end up knocking buildings down, which I'm pretty sure Jim is correct on that, then there's just no way that the price that I've heard bandied about is supportable. So, I mean, it seems to me that there needs to be, we're putting the cart considerably before the horse here. We need to find out what the landlord is willing to sell it for. Then we need to look at that price and say, is that something that makes sense for us to purchase? And then move on from there. I mean, talking about exactly what we're going to put there or how many students are going to be there is putting the cart several blocks in front of the horse.
I agree totally. I mean, I think it's a question of matching the value that that property would have to, sorry, would have to us versus what the owner's expectations are. I don't know how close or how far apart those things are at this point. But that would be key because I think it sounds like that, other than maybe on a very temporary basis, that the current facilities are not really going to meet our need. The structure wouldn't meet the, property itself is, location is fine. The size seems to be fine. It'd be great if it were within the land, but it's not big. Probably not going to be priced as big. So that's the trade. As I said before, buying the dirt and then building an entirely new structure, a set of structures, that's really the.
That's really the, the financial picture that I think is, is, is in front of us.
And, 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 you know, private industry will sometimes look at a piece of property and say, I want that piece of property. I don't care that I'm paying for the building. I'm going to knock the building down because private industry has got a, a plan on how they're going to make all of that money back. The county is not, um, you know, we're not going to be doing that. We're not going to be, uh, we're not going to be making money back on this. So, um, it's, we, we really have to, I, I've seen it happen way too many times. We would kind of fall in love with an idea and then we move heaven and earth to make the ideal work. That's a bad way for, for county government to do business. We, we, we need to have an idea and then we need to figure out how that idea is going to work. And then, then move from there to figure out a location. And so for me, speaking personally, we've got to find out how much the landowner wants to sell it for and see whether that's something that's, we think is a reasonable price to, we'll be able to get out of.
It's also, I mean, I believe the owner's quite elderly. And it was capital.
Careful now Jim.
That was Jim Hopkins.
You're not alone in this room.
That's okay.
But when you sell a property, you have to take in capital gains tax. I think there's some ways that that can be worked around. It may not save us a lot of money, but it would certainly save the property owner a lot of money. I, I don't want to go into details, but, uh,
That was, once again, I'm like, don't you don't, I really don't like.
Public negotiations.
Yeah. And, and I know that there was a, with what you're talking about, there was that type of an offer.
Okay.
That was not received.
That structure depends on a lot of
Right.
other circumstances.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a suggestion that somehow since the property seems to be the thing possibly getting, making yourself the chair of the school board to look towards seeing what the property would be purchased rather than?
I think that's the next step. Whoever, whoever, uh, whoever gets that number, I don't know how important that is, but that's, that's what we need before, as far as I'm concerned, we, we should burn up any more time and energy discussing.
That can be done.
What is your percentage of graduated classes that are college bound?
I don't, I don't have a good answer for that one at this point. Cause I'm not sure in Renee or Bill, as far as if there's a system to track what they're doing.
Yes, I'm getting that. The real true need for CTE regardless of this piece of property or not, is to give students better opportunities for those that are not going to college. That's the true essence of why we're trying to locate a place. And, uh, I didn't, I guess my question is, is that need increasing now because we're seeing fewer kids going to, going to college? And we have a greater need for trade school?
I think that's part of it, but I also think any student, regardless of their post-secondary plans, can, would and will benefit from enhanced CTE program. Cause I think that is, the way the CTE is brought forward puts your core classes and you're, and puts them into real life. You, it's, it's applicability that isn't as innate and come through as well, even as in a core class. So I honestly, I think all students, um, not just ones who might not be college bound, uh, would and should benefit from career technical programming.
I, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of examples of like if, uh, you have a student in, that's going to be in farming and he's going to inherit a $2 million property. Just being in agriculture program, he's going to need, or she's going to need a lot more education than that. So, I mean, just because you came through the agriculture program, doesn't mean you aren't going to go to college and get a master's degree. My father was an FFA, uh, teacher. And I can tell you a lot of his kids graduated from University of Maryland with master's degrees and they went back to run that farm. And it's going to be the same way in the computer stuff. Yes, you can go through a computer program, you can get a job, but you're going to, if you're really going to be successful, there's going to be a lot more education involved in, in, in just what you certifications you store.
I understand that, but there's a lot of kids out here that are not going to have that opportunity to go to college. What are we doing to help provide for them a better, greater opportunity out here in the trade field? That's the essence of CTE is pulling the bottom up, not so much giving the one school in college greater opportunity.
I totally agree with what Keith just had hit on in, uh, on page six. It kind of hits on some of the things right now. And, uh, we are experiencing a severe shortage of staffing. And I'll point it to this, there was a kid that one day that could, uh, that could probably run a small fitness place, but they were asked to drive a nail and they couldn't even function to run a hammer, hammer a nail into a board. That's the society we're becoming. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a consumer and nobody likes putting good money into bad stuff. I think Mr. Crozier's estimate on the three phases of, uh, of a project, specifically this one, we're, we're spot on. And somebody had asked, uh, we did two with the CTE of Culpeper. Uh, pre-mo price tag on that was the $17 million, which we know is not even realistic. I don't even know, uh, the dollar amount on this property here, but I do know pushing into the future that, uh, back in the day when that VDOT property, uh, was available at cents on the dollar, we let that one slide. I was, we weren't here then, but there was an opportunity missed. The trailers in front of the classrooms, that would be a great thing to go. Uh, the future could be a CTE or a convenience store. So I just, uh, the questions that are being presented are definitely excellent. And, uh, but people need trains, they need skills, not just about reading about it through somebody else's experience, but they need to get in there because nobody's ever drowned in sweat. But if you have no skills, you're probably not going to go after that. So I don't like paying taxes. If I could pay no taxes, I would love it. But if I pay smart taxes, which means as low as possible, and I see an investment that returns that investment. And having kids in the system, that's my take. And I appreciate the, uh, the invite today to talk about this.
One suggestion I would have is obviously if a center gets built, it's going to free up some space within the current school. I think everybody would be well ahead of the game to look at the reconfiguration of space. Estimate to go along with the expansion estimate because, uh, I know a lot of this is already being offered and there's no question that you need to figure that out and figure out what space would be freed up with some of this stuff.
Even looking at the, the idea of what price we might have to pay for that property. I mean, that's one part of it. I'm not sure that, uh, we would look at that and say, well, we're going to wait another seven or eight years before we can afford to build anything else. I think we need to be thinking about, uh, the price of the property, plus what would cost to, to make it usable for the schools. Even though we may not be, something happened in the next year or so, but I think, uh, just looking at the property itself without understanding what, what else, uh, what their financial impact that's going to have, I think we just can't ignore that. I think you're right, you're right too. The strategy of, say it again, the strategy of buying the dirt and waiting is not, is not a good strategy. I think you have to see it all the way through to, to a use, whether it's existing buildings or something else. I think the decision has to include that. But the end of the movie.
I think, I think the point needs to be made, uh, I'm hearing some, some comments that I think there's maybe a little confusion here. This board, my board, the board of supervisors is, has taken a position being unanimously in favor of a expanded CTE program. The problem is, it's that all that's been boiled down into one piece of property that I personally don't think is the right piece of property. It's not, it's not, it's nothing to do with not wanting to, to, to build the program. It has to do with, is this the right place to start? So it's not a question of taxes. Uh, it's a question of where can you get the most bang for your buck? And falling in love with a particular piece of property and making that the end all be all, I think is just a bad idea. And that's, I can't put it any clearer than that. There, there, there's property, there's a lot of property in Orange County, 355 square miles of it. So, you know, it's, it's saying that I have problems with this particular piece of property at the price that I've heard is not to say the alternative is to do nothing. No, the alternative is to, uh, if this piece of property can't be purchased at the right price, then you go find another piece of property that, um, will also do what we needed to do, but at a more reasonable and realistic price.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of consultants. In fact, I doubt I'd pay them. However, sounding more and more like we could use consultants in this process.
I guess I would look at alternatives. In other words, we're saying, okay, uh, I can buy other pieces of property in the county that even without necessarily knowing which one, at the order of magnitude of price and saying, okay, building a facility at some other place. And then the, uh, the operating cost differential as a result of having busing and, and separate cafeteria facilities or any of the other things that would, would involve cost. Being able to look at that trade off and say, well, okay, yeah, uh, this is what it would cost me extra a year to have it out here uh, as opposed to next to the existing high school. And what's the difference? Okay. By look at the building costs being roughly the same. I mean, there, there's a lot of different trade offs that, that you can make, I think, to try to, try to say these are some other options that may be, you know, I mean, if the, the price tag on this thing drives this way out of consideration from other options, then, then, but if the price of this, along with the construction and things like that, puts it in the same ballpark with other options, then, uh, then that may be a better consideration.
Just, just a thought. What's, what's the square footage of the, uh, the whole Prospect Heights Middle School? Anybody know? I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. All I'm saying is you could always, that is educational space. It's inflect space from the day that school was built. Might be able to take and put a CTE center there and move your admin elsewhere. Because you're not going to have the same, uh, construction requirements for admin that you are for education.
I think it's also important note, um, to bring up that there is going to be growth in this county. Um, expecting anywhere upwards of 3,000 new houses, I think was the last that I heard. Um, so with that, you equate to, you know, 75% of those houses having children. That's going to be a lot of influx of students. So thinking about having the space, we also need to think about what's going to happen in the next five years, 10 years to keep that space usable. And not just focus on what do we need right now to get it working? But how are we going to be able to continue to use that space without having to throw that money to the wind? And have to come up with a whole new plan, you know, 10, 15 years down the road. Especially with, you know, I've, I've heard lots of cries from the community about a new high school. So these are all things I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And I don't know if we'd have all those answers by the time whichever property comes up for sale. I think there's a lot of work to be done leading up into purchasing a piece of property.
And there's other options.
Next time we get that in. Or different time of day.
I was going to say too, Jim, there was plans that we had that were done 10 years ago. But in addition to the, um,
Master plans.
The master, the master plan that were in addition to the high school. You know, as far as what Chelsea's saying, if we were to pursue adding on to the high school to accommodate CTE temporarily, by the time that this influx of new people start arriving, then we have additional space in the high school to support that. And then we can, then we can actually put a full plan together as far as creating a off-site CTE center.
I mean, I believe the county already owns some blue buildings, right? Blue building. Maybe, maybe, maybe it's just tear it down to the ground and that's where a CTE center needs to be. I, I mean, it's all, it's all money.
Well, it, it was suggested earlier that perhaps, uh, myself and, and Ms. Page, uh, try to ascertain what's being asked for here by the landowner. Is that the acceptable way for us to move forward?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a key piece of information.
I, I think that's a key information, but I'm not sure that, that is the ultimate decision maker.
Well, no, no, it's, it's a starting.
Okay, that's fine. I think that's a good start.
Well, we were asking direct, a direct request was made
That's right.
that we buy that property. So I'm just, I'm working on, I'm, I'm very linear here in this process. If the schools want to drop back and say, we're not making that request, then, then, you know, but I, I do agree that, you know, at some point you have to stop talking about something and actually start doing something. We've been talking about this long enough. So I would like to see us, you know, not just if we decide not to go that way, don't just shove it on the back burner. Let's figure out which way we want to go. If we want to go this way, then that makes, that's one decision down.
Sounds very reasonable.
All right. All right.
To me, it would be helpful if we not only just look at this as a CTE, uh, addition, but also any other additional safety requirements that high school may need.
Ken, I, I, I'm, I understand what you're saying.
Well, I think it's better to have an overall big picture approach.
We need, we're having a hard enough time taking a bite out of the elephant, much less having a score.
Digest it.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Marshall.
Well, I think we, we, we all agree that we want to, to have a CTE program that is a much better, much, uh, wider range of options and offered in a better atmosphere than currently. And I don't think there's anybody who's on these two boards who disagree with that. And so, but we just need to go step by step through the process. And I think what Keith is talking about, that will be, that will be a step in the process. Do we, do we need to, you know, there are some other things we need to address at the same time. Just put this in a bubble and do CTE. But it, but it, it needs to be, we need to have a process that's orderly and goes forward step by step. So let's let Ms. Page and I take care of this first step and we'll get back to everybody and we'll see where we go.
We'll develop the following steps.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
On favor of say on it? We are adjourned.
I have a motion to adjourn. Make a motion.
It's not the way it has to be.
Your adjourn.
You are adjourned.